I didn't do a flags pledge to allegiance. Are we supposed to do that in the?
Yes.
Okay.
We are.
Well, everybody look at a flag and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag. States. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just for all. Okay. First. Item of business, a roll call. We have Commissioner Burton, Commissioner Montgomery. Commissioner Womper. I'm going through all these names here. Speak up if I didn't call.
Commissioner Torman.
Berman. And Commissioner Johnson. Okay, so we have five. Present. So we have a quorum. Okay, first item is we have. Minutes. That are gonna tax our memories. October twenty seven, twenty twenty, November seventeen, twenty twenty. I'm probably the only one that's on the commission that was there.
I was there as well, I believe. I reviewed the minutes and it sparked a memory, so.
Okay, alright, good deal. Anybody have any corrections to the minutes? None heard, they'll stand as approved. Okay.
I actually wasn't there, Commissioner Burton. Now that I think about it, I was. I was reviewing last week's.
Yeah, this is last year's.
Yeah, I was, this is back in twenty twenty.
And. Director Grover, did they just come out of the woodwork that? Never got completed or never got approved, what?
Yeah, so what happened on this is I asked June to go back and look at minutes that. And make sure everything had been posted. And we noticed that these minutes, it was done by a person who's no longer with the county. And they didn't get approved, and so we're just cleaning it up.
Okay. Alright, well, we'll consider them now approved.
And just for the planning commission's purposes, I had June listen to the recording and then she transcribed them.
Oh, okay, they weren't prepared before, just not approved. They were not prepared before.
They were prepared, but I wanted more detail in what I saw, so I asked her to go back and listen to the recording and then she. Added more detail to the minutes. How state law is situated is that we can use the recording and what's transcribed as minutes. So we have both of those posted on the website.
Okay.
So how do you, so how do you approve minutes when there was only one person there out of the? Group?
Yeah, so it makes it more difficult, and that's why we try to make sure that minutes are approved. Shortly after the previous meeting, and so in this situation, we just have to rely on what the recording said. And and then you read it and just make sure that it reads accurately.
Okay, and I noticed some highlights there, yellow, green, gray, purple. Do those have significance since they were?
No, they don't.
It's like we were talking about STRs. Way back then.
We've been talking about those for quite some time.
Long time. Okay, that's, okay, that's, I remember that, the three. The three scenarios that were presented to us, three or four. Yeah, okay, alright, we'll consider them approved. Together with the recording, they will. Meet the requirements of the law. Looks like the next thing we have is adjourned to a work session. We need a motion for that?
Yes, we need to go out of the public meeting into the work session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the work session.
Commissioner Torman has made a motion to adjourn to the work session seconded by Commissioner Montgomery. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. It's unanimous, we will return to the work session. Okay, now we are in the work session. And it looks like. We are considering. Nordic Valley rezoned discussion revisitation. Who is gonna lead us through this discussion?
Charlie is going to be leading us on this one.
Hi, Mr. Vice Chair, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Please take the floor and lead us through.
Hey, great, can do. Can you guys see my screen with the three maps side by side?
I can, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we went, we took the Nordic project to the county commission in work session last week. And they've got two items that they would like you guys, the planning commission, to reconsider. It, I didn't get the sense that they needed you to make any kind of formal recommendation on the record. You don't need to make a motion or anything like that, and so really, we're here trying to get it just a straw pull from you guys on what your direction is. The county commission just wants to make it clear that they value your input and they've got. A couple of outstanding questions that. Are a little bit different now, or at least different in the context that they would like to get your input before they move forward. And those two questions, I'll tell you what the two questions are, and then I'll dive into the details of both of them. Question number one. Is. When we're looking at the property just to the south of Viking Drive. What the planning commission saw and what the planning commission's recommendation was based on. Is very little development above uphill from Viking Drive. I believe that the concept that was in the staff report showed six or seven, maybe eight homes on a cul-de-sac. And that didn't wrap above Viking Drive. Let me kind of zoom in on one of these maps here. Forgive me as I do so, so here's Viking Drive here. Essentially, it kind of showed a cul-de-sac coming up with a few homes up in this area here. As we worked a little bit more with the applicant, the applicant has asked that. A greater amount of development rights be allowed to be preserved up in this area if they choose to do so. The applicant has mentioned to us that they don't know what the future is gonna bring. That they would like to transfer as many of the rights off of this yellow-looking parcel here. But they're not entirely certain. That, you know, whether or not they need six, ten, fifteen. Their intention is to keep it small and to keep it in compliance with the minimum acreage requirements of the AV three zone. Which is generally speaking, one unit per three acres. But this polygon, this yellow polygon here represents. What could otherwise be a density of twenty-eight development rights. If they did a cluster subdivision, they'd be entitled to do. Twenty-eight development rights, they just want the development agreement to say twenty-eight could either be built here. Somewhere on this parcel or be transferred into. The base, and this is where their base is generally speaking right here. So that's question number one. Question number two. Is. There is, it's related to the two thousand eight ordinance that was in the staff report that I sent over to you guys. The staff report that you read and the context at the time that you guys made your recommendation on this. Is that in two thousand eight. There was an ordinance. That was passed that essentially allowed. This polygon right here to be rezoned to the FR three zone. The FR three zone allows about twenty to twenty-one units to the acre. But the way that staff were reading that ordinance, it basically said. They're gonna read that the landowner is retiring. About sixteen development rights off of the hillside, which is represented by this crosshatched light green. And moving them into here. In other words, the way that we read it and the way that the record seems to reflect it. Suggests that that action, that legislative action. Didn't create. The full amount of development rights that could have existed on this four point six-five acre parcel. Which is right around seventy-seven to eighty units, if you're just looking at. The acreage divided by the number of units that could exist, twenty units to the acre. What we think that that ordinance was intended to do was just create sixteen development rights. In this polygon. Despite the fact that the polygon. Could have otherwise allowed more acreage. And they wanted to do it by develop, they did by essentially a, an ordinance which kind of reads like it might have tried to be a development agreement that basically said. We're limiting your development rights on this parcel to sixteen units. Working with the applicant between what the planning commission saw and what the county commission saw. The applicant. Provided an argument that was hard for myself and for our legal advisor advisors to refute. The argument that they basically said was. Charlie, if we, the applicant, comes into the county. To build on this parcel and this parcel only. Given the two thousand eight ordinance that was passed. And we ask for seventy-seven development rights and not sixteen development rights. Do you think the county has the ability legally to deny us? And when we looked at it through that context of building those units on this, not as transferable development rights or anything like that, just building seventy-seven development rights on this parcel. Courtland and I sat down, we went through the ordinance, and we can read the ordinance to say. That. All of those units are essentially preserved on this property. Now, it's not clear. And here's the rub, and this is why we originally. Only entertained sixteen development rights on this parcel because we thought. From a county perspective and from a public perspective, that this is limited to sixteen units. But the, but the judges, the courts have stated to us in no uncertain terms. That if there's a way. For more than one person to read an ordinance or a regulation differently. Then error in interpretation of that ordinance has to go in favor of the landowner. And Courtland and I can find a reasonable alternative interpretation of that two thousand eight ordinance. If we read it through the context that the applicant has recently suggested. And so. Basically, we think that that the seventy-seven units or it's between right around seventy-seven or eighty units. That could otherwise occur in the FR three zone if you just take the number of acres divided by twenty units to the acre. They're probably there. If the applicant was to come to the county and propose a seventy-seven acre condominium subdivision here. We think that if we were to deny that. It's highly likely the court would tell us that we're wrong. Overturn it and give the applicant that development. So today, the question for us is, number one. Do you even want to take the risk of being sued? I don't, I didn't get the sense that the county commission was interested in taking that risk. So that's number one. Number two. Should seventy-seven units just be locked into this polygon like that old ordinance suggested? Or should we open that up and allow those seventy-seven units to be transferred? So you're not getting quite as many units up on the hillside here, and just for context, here's Nordic Valley Way. These are the ski slopes, so that's kind of above one of the ski lifts or to the side of one of the ski lifts right there. So should seventy-seven units be tied to this parcel and not allowed to move down here, or? Should seventy-seven units be allowed to move freely from here down to the base? That's really the question. The question number two for the planning commission to give us just a straw pull. Gut reaction on, I guess. So, Mr. Acting Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to. Question number one, and first maybe take a straw poll after some discussion with the planning commission on. Twenty-eight units. Potentially allowed to be here.
Okay, actually, before you do that, would you give me some clarification? On this yellow polygon. Originally Nordic Valley was. Planning to do some sort of smaller base development somewhere up here. Was that on the yellow polygon?
That's right, yep, it was right up in this area right here.
Okay. And it there, as I recall, there was some, maybe even some commercial and some. Down on the main floor, and it was kind of a mini base area.
So, so that was actually, I think you're looking right up in this area here.
Okay. But this was something. Down toward their. Their new. Lift down there, it was kind of a little place.
Yeah, you're right, that was the original proposal.
That was the original, and then there was some. Discussions with neighbors and it was worked out, as I recall. That development wouldn't be so extensive up there, but there might be some kind of development up there.
That's right. You got it.
Alright. So now the question number one is. They have so many development rights up there. A number. You gave me the number, I didn't write it down.
Oh, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And they would either like to get something in the development agreement that says. We'd like to use some or all of these twenty-eight, maybe up here on the yellow. And if we don't use them up there, we'd like to transfer them down to the main base area. We like that option as we get further into our development.
That's correct.
Okay. That. Commissioners, yeah, anyone have a question of Charlie?
So Charlie, so. Maybe. What, did I hear you say? That, okay, there was eight or however many dwellings up in parcel three.
Uh huh.
On the last proposal we reviewed. Does that density coming from the village area back up to this parcel three, is that where that extra density is coming from?
No, that density is actually based on the existing AV three zone. So this is, I can't remember how many acres it is, eighty-eight or something like that acres. The math works out, if you take the acreage divided by three, that's where you get your twenty-eight.
Because I thought that the applicant was just fine leaving it with what was proposed.
He was.
Okay, so we're.
He was, yeah, changed his mind a little bit.
And so you're trying to get the development agreement, or the idea is to get the development agreement to allow it, even if he's doing it or not.
Yeah, so that's what the applicant is asking for. One of the reasons we're back asking you guys the question is because that's not the understanding you had when you made your recommendation. So we just need to know what to forward back to the. County commission in terms of what your desire is here, and I want to make it very clear. The applicant could always just. Cut this area out of the development and development agreement and do those twenty-eight units. He's got the right entitlement to do that today. Under the existing AV three zone. What the applicant wants to do instead. Is include the property in the development agreement to give him the option to move those twenty-eight units to the base. And so let's just pretend for half a second that. The planning commissioner, the county commission did nothing and just said, you know what, we're just gonna snip this parcel three out of the development. And out of the development agreement, and we're just gonna let the, let the SV three zone. Be what it is. Well, the applicant has the right to build twenty-eight. Development rights based on that. And so. Twenty-eight development rights is the default. Now, what the applicant is asking to do is, well, why don't you give me the flexibility and opportunity to maybe move those units away from this area here, hopefully making others in the area happy. But I don't want the obligation, I want the opportunity, is essentially what the applicant is asking for now.
Okay, so flexibility.
That's right.
Okay. Makes sense?
This was the applicant's idea too, wasn't it, to move, to not build as much? I mean, that was in his intent at first.
That's right, so and if you recall, the original proposal was to bring a road, snake it up in here. And move it across here to the the base like Commissioner Burton mentioned. At the base would be a pretty good-sized condominium hotel. And then this essentially road would have been lined with very small three thousand square foot lots. Down in this area here. I can't remember what the density of this would have been. But he did decide he was gonna take that off because he was concerned about. What the neighbors were, we're gonna have to deal with with that, and so he wanted to make sure that he provided something to the neighborhood. And then his fallback plan was to kind of bring maybe six or eight homes up in this area here. But since then, he's kind of reconsidered and thought, you know what, we don't want to do the extreme kind of development that the neighbors were really worried about. But we do have the right to do twenty-eight units, and we're not ready to quite give that up, but we want the opportunity to give it up and move it to the base.
Perfect, thank you.
And that. And this is, I mean, this is the way good planning takes place, isn't it? As you drill down. You make it better.
That's right.
Okay.
That would be my opinion, yes.
Okay, and you'd like a straw poll saying, does the planning commission feel okay with that or have serious concerns with that?
That's right, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Okay, any other discussion from the planning commissioners?
I'm, I'm still a little confused, so, so we took a vote, we approved. The plan that was shown to us. That had, you know, a few units there, six or eight or something like that. You're now saying, well, they have the right to the. To the twenty-eight, even though what we approved was something else. And so now they want us to revise and say, hey, let's put it down on paper, you have the right to twenty-eight?
That's right.
So they have the flexibility to use that, move it, use it, do whatever, but we approved whatever it was, six or eight.
That's right. Yep, you got it.
Technically, we recommended the.
Right.
Approve it.
Right.
And it sounds like they have twenty-eight. Rights here.
Under the way that we calculate development rights, yes, they've got twenty-eight rights.
And I'm assuming when we looked at it before. The planning had not advanced to the, the applicant's planning had not advanced to the point it is now. Is that correct?
That's correct. The applicant also has, it's not just a handful of folks that the applicant is responsible to reporting to, there's. There's actually quite a few people down the line. And as they got their heads together, realizing what the planning commission's recommendation was, and if the planning with commission's recommendation was the final approval. There might be some limitations on opportunity that they're a little bit worried about.
Okay.
Well, I'm also a little confused that we're going back and talking about the various zones of AV or FR and all these other things, when I thought in that meeting. It was recommended that we rezone it to the form-based village. Is this? Not that?
So the form-based village would be, let's see, hang on. See if I've got that graphic.
Hey, Charlie, does this have to go through a public hearing?
No, no, it does not. It's already gone through the public hearing process. This is really just.
Public hearing process was for something different than what we're looking at now. If we're starting to change back, do we not have to re-alert everybody that, hey, we're talking about changing this?
No, so the way that the state code works is. The public hearing is only for the first public, or excuse me, the noticing and public hearing is only for the first public hearing. Once the planning commission has offered the recommendation to the county commission, the county commission has quite a bit, well, from how I read the code, almost indefinite authority. To make whatever change they want to the planning commission's recommendation and then adopt the changes. And so from the point that the planning commission offers their recommendation to the point that the county commission comes to a final conclusion. Huge changes can happen. County commission just wanted to defer a little bit to you guys because they wanted you guys to know, look, we don't want to do anything extremely different than what. You guys want. And you guys saw something slightly different, and so they'd like to just get, get a straw poll from you guys and determine whether or not you're comfortable with it.
So, but the thing is, we represent the community. And so if they want us to revise and look at the new information and give a potentially new. Opinion, wouldn't it make sense to hear from the community that we represent?
It's, it's a little bit different than that, and we might be talking nuances or splitting hairs. Your representation or your reporting is to the county commission. You work at the behest of the county commission. You do provide the county commission with a sounding board of the community. And so if the county commission wanted you guys to go back to the community and get community input on this. They could certainly ask for it, but they didn't ask for that as part of this. They just said, let's, let's find out what the, what the planning commissioner wants.
Okay. Okay, can you show me the difference between where the form-based village versus what we're talking about right now?
You've got it, so here on the screen. Form-based village is the orange areas here. That's, that's the polygon of it, and then the open space zone is this area up in here.
Now, when you say open space, though. I mean, to me, that means no building.
So this was the original proposal, this was the proposal, sorry, that the planning commission made a recommendation on. Now, let's go back, sorry, I've got so many things open here. Now what we're looking at is something that looks just a little bit more like this. Where all of this area in here, still the same polygon as what you saw on the previous screen. But then parcel three, instead of going to the open space zone, I'm sorry, the colors don't match up, these colors are for a different representation, but. Parcel three would stay in the SV three zone. All of parcel four would be in the O one zone. And then parcel one, two, seven, six, parts of five, and these would be in the form base with a little bit of O one down in this area again.
So base doesn't cover the whole. Development up there.
No, it's not intended to. No, it's just, the form base is intended just to cover where the development is occurring.
But.
Oh, sorry, and the, yep, you're right, and the SV three, which they would like to keep here.
Charlie, do you have that map of like what they're, because I know we recommended something and the commissioners. They changed, and I think they provided lesser density, right, on. On Viking Drive right there, correct?
The, the applicant suggested lesser density up in this area.
No, I mean on the road on form-based, when you actually go to the form-based, is that? My question is, would that form base then change?
The polygon of it?
Not the polygon, that when we did the form-based drawing of the roads, what they proposed back to us when they came back for the rezone. That's, that's my question.
Gotcha, so the, the form-based reg, street regulating plan, they did actually go down to a smaller. Or, excuse me, a larger lot sizes, so smaller density along Viking. Now, that street regulating plan doesn't apply to Viking. Until the folks along Viking Drive decide to rezone to it. That would still be the form-based code. Right now. The applicant is only asking for, let me draw the boundary here. This area. Here to be rezoned. Where the orange would be form-based and the other colors, or excuse me, the orange would be open space where the other colors would be for base zone. So the only. Application of the form-based zone. Would be on these polygon colors down here.
Got it, okay.
Sorry, a lot of moving parts here, a little confusing, but. Hopefully we can clarify it. Other questions?
So you, you didn't send any, any of these maps out to us, right?
No, 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 I just wanted to discuss it with you guys in, in, in work session and just kind of get your. Get your knee-jerk reaction. If you guys want a little bit more time to think about it, we certainly can do that. County commission didn't say definitively what form they wanted us to ask you the question, and. I figured we'd come to you guys in work session since you already had one scheduled. And, and ask. But I mean, we could certainly reconsider this in other meetings if you want to.
Charlie. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I, I, I might have missed something. I just want to clarify if I understand it correctly. So we had that discussion a couple, probably two months ago, three months ago. Of whether there was rights or not to the other, so there's the two questions, just to, just so I understand, maybe others need it as well, but. For me, I'm not sure I'm following. The one is. Is there, was there as many rights as there is in the upper parcel? This one here on the lower parcel. The question is. Should they be allowed to transfer it? And I don't remember discussing that. I thought that was always kind of part of the plan.
Yes.
What, which part am I missing?
So you, when you say the upper parcel and lower parcel, are you, is this, let me zoom in a little bit. Is this the upper?
I'm referencing the yellow portion and then A, yeah, upper is A, lower is parcel three.
Okay.
The parcel three, in my understanding, they always had those rights and they were gonna move them, at least in my understanding. When they told these neighbors that they didn't want to build there, or that they would have chose not to build there.
That's right.
That was kind of my understanding of it. Is that, am I missing something that I, did I miss something?
Nope, you are, you're correct. They've got the right, not just right now on the, under the. SV three zone, they've got the right to build this plus all of this. They've got all the development rights to do all of that under the SV three zone. They've got to meet the minimum requirements of our code, you know, access and, and street standards and all that kind of stuff, but. They do have that right. You're correct, and so right now what they're saying is, let's look at this eighty-eight or so acres. And let's give ourselves the opportunity, but not mandatory requirement. To move from here down to here. to move from here down to here. Does that clarify for you?
What about selling them, can they sell them to other developers, or are we gonna keep it locked into this resort?
Um, well, uh, if they're in the form-based, if the other developer is in the form-based zone somewhere else, it's already in the code that they can buy them and move them somewhere else. And so, yeah, they, they would have the authority to sell them somewhere else if they, if they wanted to, I don't, if you want to lock them in, we could certainly talk about doing that to the development agreement, I would suggest you, you keep it open so that they can move away from this area if, um, if wanted. Just, only reason I suggest that is to make transferable development rights as easy as it can be to essentially, essentially stimulate the retirement of rights off of hillsides.
My, my thoughts on this is, I don't, I don't have any issue, or I can't see an issue currently with that parcel, the lower parcel three, being able to transfer into the main, I would encourage it to be, um, to be done, to, to stay in the same zone that it's at. But, so that's my two, my thoughts on that question.
Okay, so you're okay if it, if it's allowed, but you're also, you're okay if it's allowed to develop in place, or you would prefer it be allowed to develop in place, but you're okay if some of them are transferred into here?
I'm okay with all of them being transferred into there, and nothing be developed in there. Um, I thought, and my understanding was that was the way they were gonna go.
That was originally, that was part of the conversation, with the exception of a little bit down in this area here, where they would have like eight or so, uh, six to eight lots, I can't remember what the staff report said.
That's right, it was a small amount that was gonna be there, yeah. And I, I don't see an issue either way, and I think that was, that's what we actually talked about in those meetings, is that there would be a smaller, you know, small stretch of road that can mix up there with a couple houses, but, but, um, yeah, and I, I assume they would transfer over, so I, I don't, I don't know, maybe I missed something, but that, that, my understa- I'm good with them transferring it over, but I would like it to stay in that area. Because since we've already hatched over this, I don't want it to go somewhere else. And have everybody feel like we, you know, we just moved it, you know?
When you say stay in that area, you mean in this air, in the Nordic area, not, not necessarily in this-
I'd like that to be in the development agreement, I think that makes sense.
Okay. And, and honestly, I think, uh, I mean, unless, uh, the applicant gets in dire straits, uh, financially, I think it's in his best interest to keep them and develop them down at the base. Um.
And, and that, that kind of speaks to my point of why I would want it to stay there, if this, they were to get into dire straits, and then we end up with a, a, a not, what, you know, what was sold to us is a beautiful resort, more, uh, and, and then someone comes in and says, well, they got it all, the, the ability to do that, and now we can only put in some subpar. I, I don't think that's the right way to go, I think it, what was, what was, what was reviewed with the public was the intention of, of what they proposed. And I, I don't want to, I don't want this to, just because this part got approved, it can, now it's moved to the form-based village, now we could move them somewhere else and make changes to something that we weren't ever planning. So in my opinion, as it sits, those should, if we're gonna do a, if you're gonna, if they're gonna move them within, it should stay with it, not go to Wolf Creek or, um, Eden someplace else, so.
Okay, are you okay with all twenty-eight of them being just built here on parcel three, instead of moved down to here?
Me, I, I, I would prefer some of them be moved, because that was the discussion that was had in the, in the public hearing, is that that would be shrunk drastically from what was originally proposed.
Do you have a number that you think would be appropriate to leave there?
I, I don't have a number that it's appropriate, but I, I would default to whatever was originally proposed, which was small, so.
Okay.
Eight or something small.
Okay, prefer to leave as originally, I'm writing that down, originally recommended.
I'm with Chair, I, I feel like if they, they gave up six, eight, uh, all those development rights, but I don't think they meant to give them off, they just said we won't build a lot right here, so they're still entitled to them.
Yeah. But, let me throw out a little bit of motivation from the developer's side, just, just figuring out, putting ourselves in other people's shoes. If for some reason it turns to be more, uh, financially lucrative, to leave, to, to build twenty-eight units up in here, and we've got a development agreement that shows that, um, you know, all of this area is going to be left as open space with the exception of six, then, uh, if I were the developer, I'd be motivated to come back into the county and say, you know what, I just want to clip some of this out, and, and stick with the FV-three zone. Or, if I was the developer and it's the exact same timing that we're in right now, I would go to the county commission, I would say, you know what, planning commission wants me to put only six there, I want the opportunity for twenty-eight, and I just want that whole property to be excluded from the development agreement and leave the FV-three zone in place, and so, and that is still an opportunity that they have. But either way, I don't think, I think for, for me, from a planning perspective, I think it's sixes. Um, whether the units, you, twenty-eight units stay here, or six units stay here and the rest of them move. Um, just hoping to, to get the general feel from you guys on that, so.
I, I have a thought here, um, um, so, I can totally understand where we're coming from, and that those development units should, should probably be able to transfer, what, I don't know that I am totally, I don't see the vision in keeping him here, what we're gonna likely force the developer to do, he was able to make the, his model work, likely he's gonna keep him here, right? But the thought is, if he can't transfer them, then he might have to increase density, if he can't go wider, does he, does he, where he wasn't gonna go as high, does that force it to go higher? Causing more vertical impact, does it, does it cause more units to be built when the developer didn't necessarily need to do that, or didn't have the intention, but because we as commissioners aren't, we're, we're constraining over here, are we gonna force more development here than what, than what the applicant's intending? Um, Chair, that, forever, you know, maybe I'm missing something, but that's the only thought is, if we force it here, I understand what you're saying, but they made their model work without this, so not sure, maybe, if we force them to stay here, then we could be causing more development than, than what the, the applicant even intended.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, Commissioner Johnson, I don't think it's a question of whether or not we're forcing twenty-eight units to remain. The question is, do we allow twenty-eight units to remain, so flip the argument. So, they could build six, they could build twelve, they could build twenty-eight here, the difference of what they don't build is still, is gonna be allowed to transfer regardless.
Right, so I guess, I'm sorry, by saying force, you're right, not the right word, we're constraining the build to happen within, uh, within the density core, versus, so, in that, where we would be saying, hey, it's gotta stay here, so could that create more density than, in all of our emails say that, you know, the, the, the surrounding people live here would like, wouldn't like as much density, so we've, if we're, in, in my mind, force is still, but we're, we're requiring the density to stay within the Nordic Valley. Versus, do we let that still go to another zone? Where the economics makes sense, that's what I'm saying by force, Charlie. And I'm wondering, are we requiring that all be built here? Now, I understand that it's probably in the applicant's best interest for him to, to look at density here before he transfers them out, I understand that, that's, you know, we can, they can either keep it here, that's my thought, that's just my only thought, I'm okay with this, um, uh, with, with all twenty, obviously, they, they could keep all twenty-eight there and carve it out if they wanted, so I understand. I think, my thought is, I, I, I personally wouldn't require them to stay there, just because I don't want to create over, what could be overdevelopment in that spot.
Okay.
And again, Commissioner Johnson, you're saying, forcing them to stay there, meaning in Nordic Valley, the, that, that village zone versus not being able to transfer out to a different village, is that what you were saying?
That's what I'm saying, yes, thanks, that wasn't clear.
So if I can reiterate, if I understood, what I, what I think I'm hearing is, we're okay with the bottom area there, them taking the twenty-eight, moving it, moving it around that area, as long as it follows the plan that they submitted that was viewed by the public in that general sense, which was smaller amount in that area than what they originally proposed, but what was, what was actually approved or looked at, when they changed the zone was very few homes in that area. We're okay if them say, you know, say it's five homes or no homes, we're okay if they move it, as long as it stays within the Nordic Valley zone. Or Nordic Valley form-based village. I think that's what I, that's the way I feel, I think that's what I heard.
But this isn't in the form-based zone. Nor is it intended to be.
The, the main area is.
Right, yeah, but this yellow, this yellow is not in it.
Right, it'll be FV-three.
So, whether they can keep the twenty-eight in the yellow versus when they had proposed it to us, and it was recommended to the commissioners, was to leave only about six or eight, and then take the rest and put them into the form-based zone, and now they want to be, be able to just hold them on to that yellow portion, correct?
That's correct. That's the question.
Wait, so, hold on, so are you saying that this wasn't part of the form-based village when they went to rezone? When they rezone, so they didn't rezone this, or they're not asking to rezone this, is that what I'm understanding? Because I always thought that this was right behind the part of what we were rezoning.
Yep, so looking at the image on, actually, let me move the mouse, this other image might be better. Here we go. Here's what the current zoning is in that area. Now, the, the form-based zone was intended to be here in this area here. Um, originally, they did ask for form-based to kind of creep up here. Then they removed that from their proposal, so the final proposal that the planning commission made a recommendation on was essentially all of the property, with the exception of maybe the ability to get six lots out of here, transfers all, any entitlement that's tied to it, to a polygon that kind of looks like this. Where the applicant is now, the applicant is thinking, you know what? Instead of all this being transferred and preserved, permanently preserved as open space with the exception of six, maybe what we do instead is carve out enough acreage, which is now this yellow polygon, enough acreage to preserve twenty-eight. And honestly, the, that magical number, it, if you look at the aerial, they're just following an existing roadway predominantly.
So Charlie, hold on, you're telling me, if, if I heard this correctly, they are wanting to, or that, the original, they, that they weren't ever gonna rezone this, that's the same, but they wanted to take the rights off it.
It would have been, it would have been rezoned with the rest of the property as open space, with the exception of um, an equivalent acreage to allow for six homes, so what is that, eighteen to twenty acres or so? But what I'm telling you is, as they got trying to survey what those twenty acres were down in this area here, they began realizing it's probably gonna be in their best interest to survey a larger acreage of maybe eighty-eight acres over in here. And so now, instead of saying, let's leave out twenty acres that could give us six lots, let's leave out eighty-eight acres, eighty-eight acres, that can leave us twenty-eight lots, and we'll leave that out of the open space zone, we'll leave it out of the form-based zone, we'll just allow it to be the FV-three zone. But, we still wanted to be part of this development in one way, that one way is that they can still be allowed to move either all twenty-eight or some fraction of those twenty-eight units down to their base.
But they're reducing the open space that was agreed upon when we agreed for the requested rezone at the time.
Potentially, and that, right there, that's why we're talking about it again, because that's not what you guys saw, you guys, you guys are seeing what would otherwise be a potentially reduced open space area.
So, to your question at the beginning of the meeting, which was to take a straw poll as we stand today, my answer would be, I am not ready to approve that.
Okay.
I need more information, I need to look at these things and hard copy and get, and, you know, questions answered, that kind of thing, I'm not ready to say yes.
Okay. Okay, sure, I got Janet down for a, a no vote.
Charlie.
For now.
Let me ask you, go back to the original, original, where there was gonna be a bunch of condos down here.
Uh-huh.
How many condos were there gonna be?
I can't, I can't remember, it still wasn't gonna be greater than whatever their approved density was.
Was it gonna be more than?
Eighty, eighty units we had.
That's Laurent speaking, yep, that's the applicant.
Which area are you talking about right now, Commissioner Burton?
The yellow.
Right about here.
Originally, Commissioner Wompler, there was kind of a mini base site up here, with a little bit of commercial, as I recall, just like a sandwich shop or something, with a bunch of condos. And I think the applicant just said eighty, or something like that, I couldn't hear.
I, I heard eighty, yeah, or eighty-eight.
Yeah, so.
Yes, eighty, eighty we have.
So was, let's put eighty up here. And then.
Along with, the, sorry, the, along with, um, thirty-five homes. Eighty, along with thirty-five homes.
Who's speaking?
This is Rhonda Kipman, a part of the Nordic team.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So that was eighty plus thirty-five, is what, is that a hundred and fifteen? So the original proposal was, we're, on this yellow, we're gonna have a hundred and fifteen, uh, development, or dwellings here.
Right.
And, and then it got massaged around a little bit, as the applicants met with the neighbors, and it got cut down to, it sounded like six. And this thing is, I understand how things, a- as you drill down and do surveys and figure out what can work, you're gonna come up with some changes. So now we're from a hundred and fifteen down to six, and now the applicant is saying, well, I'd like the upper, I, I think I might use twenty-eight in here, but that's it. Because he's entitled to twenty-eight on this polygon.
That's right.
So, it isn't going back to the original hundred and fifteen, it's going from six to twenty-eight.
That's right.
So it is still is quite a reduced, usually reduced density there.
Yep.
And.
So, I, I hear, I hear you, Commissioner Burton, on that, and, and that makes sense, however, the, to the, the neighbors and the residents that were, that heard this and came and talked and met with Lamont, and his team, their, the developer, the six was what was, was recommended for approval, not twenty-eight. And so, so, you know, our, our, you know, I feel like we're getting the bum end of a deal, or it's just part of, part of, it feels like we were sold a bag of something, and then they come back in and change what it is that we sold. And so, I, I, I mean, the more I'm hearing about this, the more I say, whatever was originally agreed on, I don't want to change from.
Okay, and, and the point I'm trying to make is, as a development goes forward, you get more detailed and more detailed as time passes, and you drill down and you figure out what you're actually gonna build. When we, when the planning commission did its recommendation, things weren't, uh, as detailed as they are now. And it, it's never intended at that stage that this is the way, it's locked in concrete, it can never change, this is the way it has to be. This is a, goes from general to specific. If I'm wrong, please, somebody tell me, but that's the way the world works, based on my, the development world works, based on my understanding, and to come up the best.
But, but we're talking about six to twenty-eight, which is almost five hundred percent increase. But I think that's not the same as a small change.
But we went from a hundred and fifty.
Sorry, but hold on, because you're saying that as we get further along and it's more exact, but this isn't exact, because he's saying he doesn't know if he wants the twenty-eight there, but he wants to be able to maybe do it if he wants to, like, that's not an exact thing at all.
Well, they're getting into a development agreement now, which type, which puts this stuff in concrete. Before, it worked in concept, and now we're getting into a development agreement, which is concrete.
And Chair Schindman, we've also negotiated.
So, so when you, when you look at what they originally proposed, I, we can't, I don't think we can even consider what they originally proposed, just because what you asked for at the first part of the negotiation doesn't mean it's still on the table. And I understand it's not negotiation, but it was negotiated between the neighbors and the community in the public hearing, as this thing went along. We can't go, well, we started out with this, and then the community came back and said this, and we said we were good with that, and then we came back and changed it all in the development agreement to be what we originally wanted, or even half, or we, you know, changed it drastically, and that, that's the part that I feel like we're kind of, we're getting, we're getting out, I mean, I, I understand things have to change, but, I mean, a hundred percent change is different than five hundred percent change.
Well, percent doesn't, i- is not applicable here, but we got to keep in the backs of our mind.
Absolutely is, if you go six to twenty-eight, that, that's a lot, that's a lot different number.
We are prohibited by state law from reacting to public clamor. I hope everybody understands that. Our job.
Mr. Burton, they negotiated the deal with the, the public, this was what was proposed and changed and submitted. It wasn't public clamor that changed it, the developer changed it.
Good planning is not tying somebody's hands.
Is it coming up? Say something. May I say something, Commissioner Burton? It's Laurent here.
I beg your pardon.
Laurent here, may I say something, Commissioner Burton?
Okay, I think, I think the chair is now Chairman Schuman because he.
Okay, sorry, Chairman, Chairman Schuman, may I say something?
Oh, I'm sure, and sorry, Commissioner Burton, I don't mean to take it over. You're, you're pleased. If you want to take it, you can.
We got to figure out what we're.
Lamont, please.
But I would like to hear the applicant eh, straighten us out on our discussion, so we have a better understanding.
So, um, to, to be clear, this parcel number three uh, has been designed as a place where we could do real estate in the future. So it was always designed like this. We never changed it from uh, you know, one to the other. At first, we thought we could do about a hundred units on this parcel. And then we removed the road that is above Viking Drive and removed all the density from it. And we leave five to six unit, um, was something like that. Uh, that would be used for um, owners. Um, now, when we looked at the development agreement with Charlie's and him, uh, the question was, what do we do with the twenty eight unit that are on this parcel? Uh, link to the side of the parcel and the F V three zoning? And the, the answer was, can we allow the possibility to transfer all of it? Or part of it? So the development agreement has a paragraph that says that now we, our will is not to develop that part, is to, to leave it uh, the minimum that we were thinking, which is six to eight unit maximum. Um, but we, we said, why do we um, close ourselves um, in the possibility to do a little more if we want to? Let's say we want to do fifteen at one point, or you know what? Um, so that, that was the question. So in fact, in the red, in the writing of this development agreement, we were thinking, why don't we leave the possibility to keep a little bit or transfer most of it? And that, that, that's, that's all what we, we intended to do. There is nothing more or less, and that is just that. So we, we can, we can definitely uh, either leave this parcel out of, of the development agreement, or we can leave it in the development agreement. And, and eventually say that, for example, we will transfer uh, half of those units to the, to the base and keep a little more on the side. Because the problem is, is that we don't really know, we know we don't want to densify. We don't, we, we know we don't want to touch the forest above Viking Drive. Uh, but we don't know if we can, for example, cluster uh, ten or fifteen u- units on the extreme south of the property, you know? Uh, that, that, that we don't know. So we wanted to stay open to that option. That's the only reason we, we're discussing that. I hope I am clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Do we want to go back to uh, straw polling, or do we want more discussion on this? I'm going to take that as a.
I just say. At, at this point, I sure support flexibility. Cause I think flexibility ends up with the best result. And I, I think the, the applicant is sensitive to the neighbor's concerns. Uh, changes there. And I think as he goes forward, I would hope he remains sensitive to those things. Because that ends up in the, with the best neighborhood, with the best development, the best project. And I hate to tie anybody's hands. And yeah, especially, he's got twenty eight units. He can build twenty eight units there.
Commissioner Burton, vice.
Some of those off.
Can I, I, do you mind? I, I want to clarify, I really appreciate you taking, I, I was, I was late and I apologize to the commission and everybody for that. And I really appreciate you taking the, the reins and I would, will you please continue that? I don't want to interrupt that. I feel the, I would like that. If you could keep that, just to be clear, um, if, if that, is that all right? Would you continue that?
Hey, if, if our legal counsel says it's okay, I'm, I'm happy to serve in a, whatever you want me to do.
I, I had a, I don't want to interrupt. I don't, I'd rather, I'll just be a participant if that's all right. I, I, so.
Okay, so I think it, I'll continue then, and until you say, hey, I've had enough of you, Vice Chair. Okay. Uh, staff has requested, or passed on a request from the county commission. They would like to get a straw poll on how we would feel about the idea of, in the reflected in the development agreement that is now being finalized, I think. They would like our sense of whether we are okay with the idea to allow the developer some flexibility going forward. That he could, in the future, decide to transfer some of these rights from this parcel to the base. Or he could use them here. And uh, am I right so far, Charlie?
That's correct. That's absolutely right.
Okay, and Charlie points out that the developer has the right to carve the yellow out and to develop uh, twenty eight units on the yellow parcel. So I guess the flexibility that he's seeking is, uh, well, bottom line, I could do twenty eight here, but I'd like to maybe transfer some in the future somewhere else. So uh, if I've stated what you're asking is Charlie correctly, I would call, let's do a, a roll call of who could support that idea. Uh, that recommendation to the planning commission, that we allow that flexibility going forward and that it be, could be contained in the development agreement.
You, you represented it correctly.
Okay. So, uh, I don't know if, I, I would support that.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, I've got, um, I've got, I thi- I feel like I've got three definite votes. I've got one from yourself in favor. I've got one from Commissioner Wampler for not in favor. One for the chair for not in favor. Um, I heard a little bit of conversation from our other three who are on. I just, I didn't get a firm sense of a, a yes or no. So if it's okay, if I just single you out and call you by name, um, Jason, do you have an opinion on this?
Yep, I, I'm in favor.
Johnson, sorry.
No, you're fine. I, um, the fact I would rather see this a part of it than, than not. So I'm, I'm in favor of if I'm, I'm in favor of this being included in the development agreement.
Okay. And Commissioner Montgomery?
Um, yeah, so I do feel a little bait and switched on it, but I don't think we should take the rights. Um, so yeah, I agree. They should be able to move them around or use them.
And Commissioner Torman?
Yeah, I, I was, uh, I was coming in as a no-go at first and until I understood what we were actually talking about in depth. So I would say that I, if this was my land, I would, I would want the option to do, do with it what, you know, obviously, I, you don't know until you plan the whole thing out. So I, I would say I'm in favor of, of it.
Okay. I think that is clear enough direction for me. Um, are you guys okay with, if we move on to question number two?
Charlie?
Yes.
Can I, is it all right if I make a comment? I, um,
Please.
I don't know if we, if I'm, if I'm in the same, I don't know if, I want to make my point clear. I'm in favor of what was proposed, which was closer to six or small amount in that area and then it be transferred out. I'm not in favor of them retaining rights, uh, getting both ways. Um, you, we proposed it one way and it was done the one way. And, and so in some ways, I, I think, yeah, I mean, absolutely, they can transfer it over. You know, why not? And leave the six like they proposed. I'm not in favor of saying, well, no, I want to be able to keep it here too. Uh, that, that wasn't what was proposed. So I, I, I am in favor of them being able to transfer within the development agreement area. I'm not in favor of them saying, well, if you won't let us do this, we're just going to keep it as it is and do it the way that we could have done it. I don't think that's representative, that's not uh, in, in truthful in your, in, in your representation. So to be clear, I'm in favor of them being able to transfer it out and remaining and leaving some number of parcels in that area. I'm in favor of it being somewhere around six, like, or it was said, I don't know if that's the exact number that's proposed. But that, around that number, you know, within a hundred percent, which is twelve, you know, or something of, you know, of that number, or two hundred percent, I guess, uh, something like that. I'm in favor of that. I'm not in favor of, well, we want to be able to do twenty eight here if we want, or, you know, move it all out here if we want. I, I don't think that's what was proposed. So that's, that's where I stand to be clear is I am okay with them transferring it out and sticking to their original plan of having six or so in that area, but not in favor of saying, well, we want to be able to keep the option of doing multiple homes here or, you know, a large, a, a development, twenty eight homes across the top of, of, uh, Viking Drive.
Okay, perfect. I've got that written down. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. That's basically my no vote comes from, uh, we, we agreed to what we agreed or we recommended that. And at this moment, that's what I would prefer, you know? Um, we're not taking anybody's development rights away. They retain them. But what we had recommended was that the six or eight are there and the rest got transferred to a different part of the same development. All of a sudden putting twenty eight where we had agreed to six or eight is a big difference, and that's not something I'm willing to approve right now.
Great. Commissioner Wampler, uh, as far as your concurrence goes, would you be okay with as many as twelve in that area?
Um, yeah, I think that would be a bit more on the flexible side that Commissioner Burton was um, promoting. I think that that's, I'm not trying to be um, heavy-handed and stringent, but I think that going from six to twenty eight is um, is, is too much of an ask. Uh, flexibility, I think, going from six to twelve is a, is a full doubling of the, of the amount.
Perfect. Okay, I'll report back to the county commission that, uh, the, the two who dissented um, would be okay with as much as twelve and maybe we can, uh, between myself, the county commission and the applicant, maybe we can come to some kind of consensus uh, in between. Okay.
Okay. Before we move to number two, just clarify, this yellow is eighty eight acres. Is that right?
Uh, yes, if my recollection is serving me correctly, it's eighty eight. Hang on. I've got a tabulation down in here. Sorry, come on. It is eighty six point one four one acres.
Okay, eighty six.
And all of, all of those, that acreage has been um, analyzed for the slope and everything, so that the number of development rights that we're discussing is in fact um, agreed upon by, by all of the regulations and everything that we've got going on in Weaver County. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I want to make it very clear. Um, it's a great question, and I wanted to make sure everybody understands how this calculation works. Current ordinances allow clustering, cluster subdivisions to happen here. And the cluster subdivision code allows lot sizes to be as small as nine thousand square feet, as long as it doesn't create any more development rights than the acreage would otherwise allow. And so in other words, if I were the applicant and I wanted to avoid the expense of building up and down those hillsides, I would take twenty eight units, cluster them into a tight nine thousand square foot per lot footprint, build one small road that goes into it, um, well, in and out, because I guess you need one in and one out, and then leave the rest of that slope open space. And so it is financially feasible. It is possible. It's practical uh, to do it that way. So yes, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, to be clear, what, what I think you just said was that on those eighty eight acres, regardless of how much of it is a forty percent or more grade, you take the allowable amount for the eighty eight acres because in that zone, you're allowed to make it as small of a footprint as what you said, and therefore you can take the total number and just shrink them down into a small dense pocket. Is that correct?
Yeah, small cluster. Yep.
And what would the acreage of that small cluster be?
Well, if they maximized, if they went to nine thousand square feet each, let's just do a rough calculation here. That would be nine thousand square feet multiplied by twenty eight, so it's two thousand five hundred, sorry, two hundred fifty two thousand square feet divided by four, three, five, six, zero, five point seven eight acres.
Okay. And this is probably an example of your, let's reduce impact, not density kind of thing.
That is exactly right.
And, okay, all right. Okay, so all the commissioners understand we're talking about this total density of twenty eight could be built on five acres out of twenty eight, out of eighty eight. Okay, all right, everybody ready to move on to question number two?
Vice Chair, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, that's correct. It can't, I, I heard, I heard you, it could be, but it, but I, but my, my fear is that it won't be and that we're leaving the door open that it would not be. That's what I don't, I want it to be like what was talked about. That's my, I understand it can be, but I also understand it can be the other way. And I wanted, I would prefer it to be how they, what they proposed, as close to what is proposed as possible.
Okay, how big are, just out of curiosity, how big are those lots on Viking Drive?
They're about an acre a piece.
Okay, and if, if they did just the, uh, the zoning that this, the F R three zone, it would be three acre lots, right?
It would be three acres a piece, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, now has there, have you had discussions with the developer? Is he looking at this cluster idea?
He is aware that it exists, yes. He hasn't gotten far enough along to make any definitive decisions, though. Oh, I'll, I'll let Laurent speak for himself.
Yes, absolutely. We talked about it because we don't want to build these eighty acres. So what we had in mind is to freeze, uh, let's say, uh, seventy five acres, for example, and keep a small, a small, uh, uh, cluster to, so that we could do those homes on the extreme south of the property. But, uh, as we just said, we have not done all the design. We have not looked at all the details. And this is why we were concerned about the way this development agreement would be written so that we would keep this option. But we have absolutely looked at that because we don't want to develop this piece. As we said, we would like to keep the maximum of this piece uh, in the forest, uh, as it is right now. Uh, we just, but, but we wanted to have a possibility to have a small cluster on the south side.
Okay, so let me just, uh, poll Commissioner uh, Schuman and Commissioner Wampler again with a little different straw poll. If the development agreement were to restrain twenty eight units being on a five point seven acre parcel of the extreme parcel uh, south end of this yellow, rather than spread out across the eighty eight acres of yellow, would that be more, uh, would you, you be more warm to that idea? Commissioner Schuman, do you understand my question?
I do, and I, I appreciate you, the question. I, I don't, I, I am not more warm to the idea, and I'll tell you why. Um, it'd be, the idea that, uh, we came in and we said, we're. Um, it'd be the idea that uh we came in and we said, we're gonna do a small amount here and it will, you know. Whatever, if it was six, right, I'm not sure what it is, but even if it gets as high as twelve. It's what was sold to those residents in the in 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 the meeting to approve the entire form base. And I know it's, I know the clamor and I understand it, but at the end of the day, we were considering that, hey. The developer said that they were not gonna do this massive development over here or this big hotel or, you know, the hundred and ten units here. They took that out, they made concessions, they did these things. And we took that into consideration when we said, no, we we agree that you should be able to change to this zone or we we recommend for approval. And then to come back and say, well, we still have the right to do this. And 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 if you don't, you know, we want to be able to do it either way. We want to keep our, we want to be able to do both. Is my heart burned with it and, you know, I I could say, I'm okay with a small amount being twelve or six, eight. Which is what my understanding and I'm guessing and I know the community's understanding was that smaller amount. That's what I'm okay with and I understand clustering. But I think that was also their concern that you'd have a a large group of people or of of homes. Clustered behind their their houses. And so I think that's the concern. So, no, I I would not, I wouldn't lean more that way.
Okay, now, Commissioner Wampler, the idea of clustering these on five acres. Would you be more warm to that idea if it were at the extreme south end of the yellow parcel? That's actually away from the homes, isn't it?
There's a, there's a row of homes on this side here and it's quite steep right in here. The easiest place to develop is right over in this area here.
Okay.
So, um, to answer your question, I think. I think what, if I'm parsing out what you're saying is, you know, taking into account. That they could take that area away from and separated it out. And that they could have twenty eight development rights wherever they maybe want to put them, wherever they could feasibly or economically build. Um, does it make me feel any better if we agree that they can keep the twenty eight potential? Um, as long as they agree to stick them on a a maximum of five acres or so of that eighty eight. Um, while that, I mean, while that sounds nice, I, the thing is, is I, I'm with Commissioner Schuman on the fact. Chair Schuman, that when it comes to having my um. Kind of my cushion, because obviously this, the decisions made by the commissioners, so we're not, you know. We're not making any decisions here, but trying to give them a sense of of approval or or not is. You know, that was done a couple of months ago with the plans that were brought to us that were discussed with the community and I feel like this is a massive change. Uh, again, I understand that the discussion is it might not even happen. He might stick with six or eight. He just wants to be able to have it locked in that he has the ability, if he wants, to do differently. Um, I'm just not comfortable at this moment in this work session with what I'm being presented. Um, saying that that's okay with me. Um, I'd 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 need more information. I'd want to have, you know, I'd want to have more discussion about it. I understand. It's not me making the decision, but for me to give the commissioners my opinion, we recommended something two months ago and and. And that still stands for me.
Okay, all right, thank you. That that should give some more clarification to the commission. Does there have to be a public hearing for this rezone?
No, you've already had the public hearing. Uh, that's why we're just gonna do a straw poll.
For the, for the commission.
Oh, for the commission, yeah, they will have a public hearing. There's not required, there's no public hearing is required under state statute or county statute. But they generally like to do this um in a public hearing.
Okay, all right, so the the public gets another shot at this.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Thanks, commissioners, for your input on this. Let's move to question number two. Uh, and as I understand that question, that we're talking about the little uh. F R three, it's. What is it? It's orange in one place and yellow?
Yeah, I just like, I like to be colorful, I guess. But yeah, yellow on this one.
And this is a four point seven five acres and. The discussion is going back to a tw- two thousand eight ordinance, the the county commission adopted. That established, a- and this ordinance could be read, that there were seventy seven development rights. Reserved on this F R three parcel. Or that there were sixteen only. Uh, and it's unclear and you have expressed concern that there might be litigation. And it would be, the county would be hard pressed based on your understanding of state law. To take the position that there are only sixteen instead of the seventy seven. I think Cortland has uh coined us with this uh a few times. That I call it the tie goes to the runner statute. That if there is an ambiguity, if a stat, uh an ordinance or statute can be read in multiple ways. Uh, that it it will be interpreted to. That the applicant's interpretation is the one that is allowed. Is that correct?
Cortland, are you there?
Y- yes, I am. So can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the state code section that you're referring to is seventeen dash twenty seven eight. Dash three oh eight and it says, if a land use regulation does not plainly restrict a land use application. The land use authority shall interpret and apply the land use regulation to favor the land use application. So if there is a plain restriction, the plain language governs and if that plain restriction. I I mean, I guess I'm repeating what the wording says, basically. Um, if it's plain, we go with plain language. If it does not plainly restrict that, then we interpret it and apply the land use regulation to favor the land use application.
And Mr. Vice Chairman, one of the, uh, just a slight clarification on one of the statements you made. Um, the two thousand eight ordinance doesn't say anything about the seventy seven other units. It's actually uh by omission, um it's inferred to be there, but the point that um as just emphasized by Cortland is. That it doesn't plainly restrict the use of those other seventy seven. And so it can very easily be understood as, well, this is an entire rezone of X amount of acres, of four point six five acres. And if you were to divide that up to the smallest amount that uh lot area or unit area, a- as is allowed by the F R three zone. Then, yeah, there's, there's seventy seven units that are possible there. Now, the ordinance of two thousand eight, it does talk about sixteen units. But just by the omission or by not plainly stating the rest of it is the other, whatever sixteen minus seventy seven is. Is being restricted or hereby restricted from coming into fruition. It didn't say that. It should have said that if that's what we meant. And it didn't say that and by virtue of it not saying that, we think that it's likely the court would probably uphold. Um, the applicant in a request to develop all seventy seven units just on the four point six five acres up in here.
Commissioner Burton, may I comment again, please?
Yes, of course.
So, I I agree with what Charlie said, but. We also agree, at least I agree, that there is a contrary point of view that is reasonable. I mean, you can look at this ordinance and it mentions an attached concept exhibit that applies. That concept exhibit has the number sixteen on it. It says very clearly. Development data, proposed units, sixteen units. So that's pretty clear that there was a concept attached that shows sixteen units. So somebody could very reasonably argue that development, that rezone was limited to sixteen units. The issue there is, just again, it was not plainly stated plainly enough stated, in my opinion. To conclusively determine that, because when you say words like the attached concept exhibit supply. The very term concept does not imply a finality. The term concept implies, or at least it can be argued to imply, this is an idea. This is something we might want to do here. And so, uh absolutely, it can be argued the opposite way. But that's the issue, is that it can be argued a couple of different ways and reasonable people might disagree with me and say. Portland is absolutely wrong. It cannot be argued to include more than sixteen units. And that, they're entitled to that opinion, but we collectively have not been comfortable. Just saying we are going to cut off the landowner's rights based on that argument. Because there does seem to be the opposite argument that there are the full entitlement of the. I think it's ninety three units based on four point six five acres at twenty units per acre. I think that's the calculation. And so the ninety three units, if you subtract the sixteen, that gives you the additional seventy seven units.
Uh, thank you.
Um, anyway, that that's kind of the basis for that. It's not us saying, yes, we are one hundred percent certain and stuck on the idea. That there were more than sixteen units, that the full ninety three units existed. It's that we are saying, we acknowledge that there is that argument there. And in our view, it is not plainly enough stated that there are only sixteen units that we feel comfortable. Limiting it to that. I hope that's clear, that we're just acknowledging the ambiguity there.
That helps and the the words from the statute are plainly restricted. Is that correct? Did I hear right?
Yeah, it says plainly restricted, then it's not restricted. Yeah, it says if a land use regulation does not plainly restrict a land use application. The land use authority shall interpret and apply the land use regulation to favor the land use application.
Okay, thank you, Cortland. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions on this?
Are they wanting to build seventy seven additional units or transfer them somewhere?
So I think the desire is still to um transfer them. Right now, the county code, it says that you can get up to fifteen units on a dead end road. And so if they wanted to do more than fifteen up in this area, they'd have to provide a loop road. They own enough property to do it. Um, and so that that wouldn't be a a constraint in terms of is it possible? It's just a financial constraint. And so, yeah, they're looking at only uh doing uh about fifteen up in this area and they want to move the rest down.
Could they move them to that parcel three that we just talked about?
Uh, no, not so that if the parcel three stays in the A V three zone. Twenty eight units is the max and we don't have an ordinance that allows units to be transferred to the. Sorry, F V three zone, I think I said A V three, I meant F V three. And so, no, they couldn't transfer it over there. Uh, the only place they could transfer it to is another form based village zone. Which, once they get the rezone, is just gonna be this area here, as evidenced by, or as described over, where are we, here?
Or across the valley, right? They could do form based, form based.
Yeah, or to another form based village. Yep, they wouldn't be restricted on that yet.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it sounds to me like the county commission has to make a decision based on advice of council. And it sounds like the advice they're getting is uh litigation would be pretty risky and if. Charlie, if your straw poll is to us, do we feel comfortable uh taking a risk? Uh, on this one, i- is that?
The question.
Yes, they could make a legal conclusion, which we're not confident to do.
Right, so, yeah, definitely not asking to make a legal conclusion. The the legal conclusion is in the advice that um uh Cortland has already offered. Really, my question for you guys, I probably shouldn't have even put the question of risk out there. That really should come down to uh the attorney's office evaluating uh that risk and the county commission making file determination. So I'm 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 gonna distill it down just to the to the two options. One is. Use the two thousand eight ordinance to say, fine, if you're gonna, if you're gonna argue that you've got ninety something units attached to this pro- property right here. To build them in place, we're not gonna allow you to move them. That's option one. Or option two, if you're arguing that you've got ninety something units attached to this property, we'll let you spread it out in 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 any of the. Form based designated area. So that's option one or two.
Charlie, that 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 negates the fact that there's option three, which is that the two thousand eight ordinance stands as written. Both your options one and two basically hand over the seventy seven additional units.
That's what we're saying. We think the two thousand eight ordinance does do.
You think?
Not on purpose. We're not saying it does it on purpose, but we're saying that because it's not clear. It, we think there's a reasonable argument to suggest that it already did that.
Can I ask you what changed your mind? Because when we had our meeting a couple of months ago. I brought up the discrepancy in these total numbers and I talked to both you and Laurent um about it. And you said that while you were very much aware of the developer's opinion and his proposal. That you felt secure in going with the lower conservative number based off of all the paperwork within. The county ordinances. So why now are you saying so freely, well, probably not?
Yeah, I, well, and it would focus on probably because uh obviously everything comes down to what the judge says if the, if legal proceedings happen. Um, after the applicant explained it through a little bit of a different context. So all the way up to this, uh to the point that the planning commission made a decision on this. My uh thought on this was, this is all a legislative action. We get to say what what it means and what it doesn't mean. Through the legislative action, the county commission gets the final control and their decision making is very, very broad. It's not limited to, for example, administrative action, which is the rules are already set. We have to follow the rules, otherwise we get in trouble. Until uh the applicant came to me and said, look, we think that if we came to the county and we applied. To build ninety something units or whatever that number is on the four point six five acre property. We don't think you can say no, and if you do, we think we've got a a good argument to appeal and we'll win in court. At that point, I started looking at it not as a legislative decision. Now that's an administrative decision because the rules were already set. By that two thousand eight document, which now I've got to read it in favor of the landowner. Because it is a rule, not a legislative action anymore. So I went to, I be lined it into Cortland's office and Cortland and I had probably a good several hour conversation over the course of a few days. Trying to pick the applicant's argument apart. It's not to say that if we were to say, no, we're not gonna agree that you've got any of these rights and ultimately it'd be the county commission who says that. It's not to say that we're gonna definitely lose, but what we are saying is that jurisdictions have lost uh over less. Uh, it it is not plain enough in what happened in two thousand eight, what was being restricted.
Okay.
Scary concept for me, because we've, we we operate under the assumption that what has been done in the past is done. And sometimes new court cases, new decisions lead to revisiting of old decisions. And and here we are under that circumstance.
Commissioner Burton, can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
My my thoughts on this, Charlie, is that what I, from what I just heard is. Well, the commission, the planning commission went over, went over this. We we hashed it out and we made a recommendation. But then the 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 developer came up and said, hey, ma'am, I don't think I agree with that and you changed your mind. And so for me, regardless of the risk or the association where we might, it might be wrong and the court might change it. We kind of live in that world anyway, where they can do that anyway, but I think that's for the courts to hash out. We've already made this decision. And I don't know why we need to look at it again. That's my.
The time that I offered my.
We already said it was sixteen and if he comes in and makes an argument that's very compelling, that changes your mind, doesn't mean I, we need to revisit this. In my eyes.
I agree.
So that's a reasonable uh stance, I think.
So, Char- Charlie, I have a comment. This is Commissioner Tormann. Um, so. The thing that's, the thing that kind of bugs me about this, I guess, to put Frank, is that we, is that. I feel like this was known a lot ti- a long time ago and I'm not saying by the the planners or anything, but by by the applicant. And I feel like we kind of got the rezone done in the form based village. And then I feel like this is kind of like, it looks, now that we got that done, let's do this now. And that's how, that's what I don't like about it and I and I feel like. That's kind of where we're going.
I agree with you on that feeling and it's not super comfortable for me either. I interpreted it a certain way the entire time along and and now it's being presented differently. And I'm I'm compelled. And I'm I'm compelled to reconsider the way that I had originally read it.
Well, can I, can I say something here?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. So we always looked at this parcel as a F uh, um, F R three parcel. With twenty units per acre. Our calculation has always been ninety-three. Uh, ninety-three units on this parcel. When we purchased the property. We purchased a four point six five acre with twenty units per acre. The text ordinance does not limit anything. So the text ordinance is clear. There is one page, very easy to read. And there is no limit in this text, the first page of the text. Then there is um, um. Proposed plan with sixteen units. Uh, but the text itself, which creates uh, this parcel and this zone does not limit the. Uh, construction, the number of units. So um, that's what we um, presented. And during the meeting you had for the approval of this project, both number were presented. Four eighty-eight or five sixty-five, four eighty-eight, and the difference is seventy-seven units, which correspond to this parcel. So we are not asking for more or not, or we are not changing our opinion. We have always stayed on this, in this opinion, and we have always asked to have the exact number that we have legally. In this project, the exact number of density. We never asked for less or we never asked for more. We ask for the exact number. So this is why we are uh. We are, we have looked with our legal team and said, there is no. Um, other way to look at it than the way we looked it. Now, I understand the opinion of uh, Charlie and Courtland, which may say, you know. Uh, there was sixteen units at first uh, planned as a, as a design. But that doesn't mean that the number of density for this parcel is the, is sixteen. That's, so that's, that's my way of seeing it. Um. And to go back to question one, in order to avoid any issue with uh, the neighborhood, I don't think, Charlie, we need to. Uh, include that language in the development agreement. We can just say that. We will transfer, you know, twenty units to the base or something like that, so we don't have an issue with a twenty-eight. Uh, I agree with the fact that the neighbors uh, looked at that and and the members of the planning commission looked at it. Uh, looking just at six or eight units. It is our mistake that we should have probably put a little more on this. South side, but that's fine. So just, just to clarify that points.
Are you okay? So going to eight? Doing some, some live editing. Thanks, Laurent.
Okay, so I'm 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 good. We, if we leave, if we say, you know, we're gonna transfer twenty units of this, of this parcel, so we. We limit that eight unit, for example, uh, so we can build more than that.
Hey Charlie, so how many, the email stated seventy-seven, so sorry, did I miss something? He, we just referenced twenty-eight.
Sorry, we're, we jump back to question number one briefly.
Oh, sorry, I was confused. Um, me personally, I'm kind of with the chair. This feels like a legal matter and. Us and, you know, I'm not an attorney, so not that smart like Vice Chair Burton, right, that did this for years, but that's. Uh, my opinion on density transfers in form bases. That whatever, you know, I think I stated that earlier, but I I would prefer, I don't know why we should vote on this. I think this is between the county commissioners and council. I I don't, I I honestly don't know that it's appropriate. We, we're, we're pulling on this for me personally, because I, it feels like there's. We don't know enough here and and it's not our area of expertise.
Johnson, let me um, let me rephrase just a, just a little bit. So instead of asking or answer, sorry, instead of answering the legal question, which. We'll do with commissioners and we'll do with with Courtland. The only question that I'm asking uh, for of of you guys is if, asterisk on the word if, if. It is agreed by a court of law. That the applicant has the ninety-something units or seventy-seven, whatever it is, eighty or so units assigned to this parcel. Are you guys okay with those units being distributed throughout or isolating them to this parcel here? Remember, until they are rezoned, they are form-based zone, they have no right to transfer. And so, one rule of thought or one school of thought is, well, this original twenty, two thousand eight ordinance, maybe we screwed it up. Somebody who was here at the time screwed it up. They didn't plainly restrict it. Maybe ninety-something units are assigned to that property. Um, but we don't have to allow it to transfer if you don't want it transferred down into the base. It could be stuck there. That's the only question I'm asking. Does it stick there? Or does it, is allowed to be transferred down?
Well, Charlie, hasn't it always been contemplated that these density would move around and the, the base. Down there on the right would be the most dense.
It was always contemplated that four hundred and eighty-eight units would move around and that the base would be the most dense.
Now, I just had a recollection. Uh, from this discussion. And I can hear in my mind you saying to the effect that, well, the developer thinks he's got. X and we think it might be less than that. We're, we're batting it around trying to figure this out. And that probably relates to sixteen or the ninety-three.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so it's not like the developer is coming up with this new idea. Hey, I've got some more. He has always taken the position that he has ninety-three on that parcel. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay, because I I sensed some heartburn that, hey, we we moved down the road a little and now he's asking for more. He's never changed his position. He has always asked for, or or taking the position he has ninety-three units on that. Four point seven five acres, correct?
That's right, that's right. And the expectation that there's only sixteen units there, that's definitely not the applicant's uh, uh, bait and switch. That. That is really hopeful. Well, at, it beginning, in the beginning, it was. My definitive interpretation of that ordinance after Courtland and I reviewed it ad nauseam at the time. And we were very hopeful in favor of the public that the action of two thousand eight, or at least the intention of the action of two thousand eight would prevail. But after we did a little bit more research and a little bit more consideration. We understand the uh, the applicant's uh, protest in asserting that, no, they've got ninety-something units, not sixteen there.
Okay, and it sounds like legal is a little uncomfortable taking the position that they're sixteen instead of ninety-three. And I just paid my property taxes and I would hate to see all that money we had to come up with. Go to fruitless litigation on an issue like this. It's like, what do we have to gain and what do we have to lose? Because I understand the cost of this litigation.
Well, it does sound though that, I mean, this isn't gonna be our only time with this discussion. This is reminding me a lot about that C W basin property where. The contract says, you know, it's got X units on it, but hey, what happened to these other ones that aren't verbally said are. Taken away. It just doesn't mention them. Um, and I think that it's valid having a court come down and give a final opinion. I understand there are costs involved, but. I don't think that a, a threat of a, of a lawsuit should make people tuck and run. You know, sometimes you just need a judge to say, this is enough wording and and furthermore, I'm not sure who's writing these things, but we really need to look into. Making sure that that person is very explicit in what is included and what is not, because this is at least the second time since I've been on the board. Which is about three months, four months um, that this has come up. We're talking hundreds of millions of dollars worth of property uh, of of value here. Um, and it is worth having, I think, uh, you know, an official judgment come down, but. I can understand some people not wanting that, but um, but we're talking about a lot of value.
It's easy to say, let's go spend a few hundred thousand dollars litigating this. It's easy to say because it's the county's money. But then, when you look at the statute and the words are, if not plainly restricted. And council has just told us, it is not plainly restricted. Then the applicant uh, hi- his constant, his uh, interpretation. Is the one that will must, it, I think the word is shall be followed. Is that correct, Courtland?
I, it does say, the land use authority shall interpret and apply the land use regulation in. To favor the land use application. And I want to make it clear, I'm expressing an opinion here. I don't guarantee that I'm right as far as how a court would come out. Because you can never be sure. But in discussing this, um, ultimately, the county commission. Will make a decision. I'm not the one who makes the final decision and I think you all understand that. I I I hope the public understands that, that. You know, my, my job is to point out what the law says, provided bias as to. My predictions as to possible risks with any approach. Uh, and then the decision-makers make the decision and. Um, I I try my best to. Determine what I think the law says and what the possible outcomes might be and the likelihood of those outcomes, but. Ultimately, the county commission will make that decision and um, I, I certainly think it's valid for you as a. Planning commission to express, you know, a different opinion. About what the possible outcome might be and express to the county commission a desire for them to push back a little bit. Um, but I also can see that Charlie is saying, well. That is one option for the county commission to consider is to say, no, we want to limit it to the sixteen units, but. He's also asking if the county commission decides to go with the ninety-three units. Do you want them all to. Stick on this upper parcel or do you want them to be able to transfer them down to the village? And so, uh. There are a couple of different questions being tossed out here. Um, and you know, in the end, I recognize that there's not a clear answer. Although some people might think there is. Um, and and maybe it's best to go to court if, if that's what the county commission wants to do. Um, then we'll, you know, see, you know, what to do about that, but that, that's kind of a question for them to decide.
Okay, thank you. So it appears, here, here's where we are. It's a cost benefit analysis. Uh, what does the county have to gain or lose if there are ninety-three units on that property or sixteen? Is it worth it to the county to spend a few hundred thousand dollars litigating this? To prevent an additional seventy-seven units from being utilized in this form-based uh, zone somewhere. Either in place or down at the uh, more dense uh, core of this village area. Yeah, I I don't, my. My observation is. That, listening to that statute. Uh, there's not a real good chance of winning on this one. I always advise my clients, there's the Las Vegas factor. There's a fifteen percent chance you can go into court with the very best or the very worst, worst case. Uh, very best and you're gonna lose based on Las Vegas and the judge and the way he ate for breakfast and vice versa. But taking, risking a whole bunch of money to prevent seventy-seven units from being transferred around. Within this base, uh, that makes sense to me. And I think all our discussions have been the idea that we're taking. Density from one place, we're concentrating it in this base area and that's what villages are supposed to do. So.
Commissioner Burton, if I might jump in again, this is Courtland again. I. Just can't remember where the several hundred thousand dollar figure came in.
I just, I just made it up because I am familiar with litigation. Now, the county got unlimited funds. They didn't cost them anything. They just raised tax, right?
No, but that's, that's, in my opinion, a far extreme, like, overstatement of what the litigation costs would be. And I don't know if that would be something that. Our attorney's office would handle internally or if we would contract with outside counsel to litigate that. I don't know, but I. I don't think it would be anywhere near that amount of money. Just, just, but that would be a discussion for the county commission to have with.
That you're trans.
Commissioner Burton, can I make a comment?
Certainly.
Vice Chair. Um, I can appreciate the cost benefit analysis for sure. However, my thoughts on that is, it's almost irrelevant. It's not something that we, it's even for us to decide. We can make a recommendation that they, that they fight it or not, but it's not really up to us ultimately, I think. And in, in my opinion, as far as that goes, I, I don't know that it, you know, we can look at it that way because anytime someone threatens to sue. We could also say, well, cost benefit analysis, we should just settle or or try and and not, not go there and we'd always end up losing. Either regardless, I don't know that this is a discussion about whether or not they should argue about those numbers. I don't think we, they're asking us that. I know it's brought up and I think our opinions have been stated. However, I think the argument is whether or not, if the court, if they decide to, if it gets that far or if the county commission gives it, should those numbers. Be moved or kept in that area. And I think that's the question. And in my opinion, I, I. I, 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 you know, speaking for myself, I, I'm, I think it's great to build a nice place. But I, I gotta put myself in the shoes of the residents around that area a little bit and that, and I think it would be really difficult. To keep it up in that one area, not just from a road standpoint, but from, from every aspect of putting seventy-seven units in a four acre zone. Where it's around that area is not even, is, is what, three acre minimums, you know, it's, it's, it's very open space. And I think that that would be extremely difficult to ask them to put that up there. And and so I don't think that's feasible. And and smart and and you know, you, Commissioner Burton and I talked earlier about, or once about. The, this Old Snow Basin Road and how when they did the planning for that area. Nobody, we all, they all did the planning for the, their individual subdivisions, but nobody planned for that main road as it connected. And I think we'd end up in the same area. So in my opinion, as much as I. You know, I, I want to say, no, you know, this was hashed out before or, you know, it was, it was explained it was sixteen. I wanna, you know, I want to stay with a, that's what it should be. But if there is to become that there is more, I think they should be allowed to move it because I think it will be better. For everyone ultimately than having it stuck up there uh, in that one spot. So that's kind of where I fall. Uh, I appreciate you hearing me out.
Okay, yes, thank you for those comments. Very uh, applicable. Okay, any other commissioners want to uh, ask any more other questions or share their observations?
If, if the question is to, uh, this is Commissioner Tormann, if the question is to. Allow them to move it down to the form-based area, I would say. I would be in favor of allowing them to move them versus keep them up there. So that's my.
I think that's what the question is distilled down at this point to be.
Yeah, yeah, if I, if we're not getting into whether it's the unit count or whatever. Sounds like that's not gonna be our decision or maybe we don't even want to comment on that. I would say just. I would give them, I would be okay with them moving those down to the, the core area.
Okay, is that the question we're asking distilled down, Charlie?
That's right, that is it.
Commissioner Burton, uh, Montgomery here. Are we talking about moving them all across the valley or keeping them in Nordic though?
Right now, the only question is, are they allowed to move them somewhere else in their village area?
In their own village area, not the Wolf Creek or Eden.
Now, if there are other form-based zone areas, there is not a prohibition right now that says they can't move. But right now, this is the only form-based area until we actually get it adopted in other places. Um, once this is adopted. So, yeah, it it'd be limited to here until other form-based areas start to actually pop up.
That would be my opinion as well as be able to move them um, and stay out of the legal thing. Let the commissioners decide if they want to pursue that number.
This is uh, Commissioner Johnson. Yeah, I would agree with that is allowing them to move within that form base and then. Same comment is allowing them to move to other form bases the code allows as well.
Commissioner Burton, this Trevor, or Commissioner Schuman, can I make another comment quickly?
Yes, please.
I, I, I would support in the, so from a, from a recommendation. I recommend that we incur, that we stick with the sixteen units as said, if, if there's gonna be a recommendation.
However, that means that, but what I, 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 not that that's the question, no, not what they're asking. But what I, I would lean that way. However, I don't think they should be able to transfer. I think we should put in the development agreement that it needs to stay in their zone. I think we should recommend that they stay in the Nordic Valley Form Based Village, not transferred out. I think that is an important thing to recommend. So whether or not we recommend a sixteen, I guess, but I would encourage the rest of the commission to recommend that those units uh stay, if they're, they're allowed to be transferred, but they're allowed to be transferred in the one form-based zone, the Nordic, Nordic village area. Thanks.
I got that written down. Thank you.
So I'm confused on, I, I understand that that we're not discussing the sixteen versus the ninety plus, but at the same time, so with the question as asked, for me to sit there and tell you what my opinion is on letting them move or do whatever, I'm, I'm confused now on what that does to what we discussed with the proposal a couple of months ago, when we had the various limits of, what was it, fifty feet or um? I don't know, there were various size requirements, height requirements, various things that they had to stay within. And if we're now adding seventy-seven.
All of this, all of them still apply. So it doesn't change any of that. They still have to figure out how to compress those seventy-seven units into the limitations of the form-based village ordinance.
That's if we don't allow them to transfer though, right?
If, if you don't allow them to transfer out of this village, you mean?
Well, just out of that current zoning property, four acres, they'd have to fit all of them in there.
A- actually, yeah. So in, in both cases, let me a- answer both of those questions. So if you just said, leave it on the four point six five acre parcel, the applicant is gonna have to figure out how to compress ninety whatever units into buildings that are no taller than thirty-five feet tall. Um, and uh, let's see, what other standards do we have in there? Has multiple uh streets that go in and out and um that's, that's probably about it. They could build pretty much wall to wall in that zone.
I thought the reduced height was down there in the eastern portion.
So if you recall from the form-based village on the village, in the village, actual commercial village area, the height went up to fifty. But everywhere else was still limited to thirty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that answers Commissioner Montgomery's question. If, if we said, leave it in place, then we're telling the applicant to figure out how to cram ninety-something units into those four point six five acre uh uh parcel with a height of less than, of thirty-five feet or less. But to Commissioner Wampler's question, if we allowed them to move out, does that mean that these buildings get taller or bigger? Um, potentially bigger, but not taller. The top, uh, the, the form-based uh mixed-use commercial streets and multifamily streets are still limited to fifty, except for the buildings that are located closest to this intersection here, that's limited to thirty-five. And then everything else, all the other multifamily and single family is limited to a maximum of thirty-five.
Okay, any other commissioner comments? So as to the question, uh, should the developer be allowed to transfer units from the four point seven five acres to other areas? I'm gonna break this into two questions. What other areas in the Nordic Village Form-Based Zone? Or should he be required to only keep them on the four point seven five acres? Okay, straw poll. Uh, who wants to be first?
Commissioner Burton, I think I've got an answer unless the answers have changed. I think I have an answer for him, everyone but Commissioner Wampler.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm still.
Not to put you on the spot.
It's okay. I'm, I'm, I have no problem saying I'm not comfortable with this. Um, I, I don't like making decisions based on, I mean, I, I I think we go for the, you know, the reading of the sixteen units. Um, so to, to tell people what to do with units that I would argue don't exist. I think that's, I'm not comfortable doing that. Um, I can, I get how you can reword the question in a way that I could answer in the, like, you know, if that's, if that area is part of the form-based village, then, I mean, part of the form-based village language was they could shift around, right? So you can, you can word it in a way that can get an answer. I'm just, I.
Okay, well, the question is then, whatever number of units are on that parcel elementally determined, can they be transferred around within the Nordic Valley Form-Based Zone?
Okay, let me answer it this way. When we, when we forwarded a positive recommendation on the proposal two months ago, what was the answer to the question of the sixteen units on that piece? Were they allowed to be transferred or were they being held there?
They were allowed to be transferred. Essentially, they were just put into a bucket of units that could be moved around at, at their.
Right. So, so in that case, it, then it seems simple. Whatever is decided is the number of units preferably by a court, but whatever's decided is the number of units. If we had, had recommended that they can be transferred within the form base, then they can be transferred within the form base.
Okay, Mr. Uh, or, or Mr. Vice Chairman, maybe uh, if, if you'd allow me to entertain one more question. I'm sorry, there's a vacuum going on in the background. Um, if you allow me to ask the planning commission one more question, straw poll, who would be in favor of taking the assertion that those ninety-two units exist as opposed to sixteen? To a judge and asking the judge the question, it might be helpful not to say that the commissioners would do it, but it might be helpful for them to hear how passionate somebody is, or the planning commission is, members of planning commission is about whether or not they wanna see it go to a judge and have the judge a- uh, answer the question. And getting an answer to that might actually help me uh uh negotiate somewhere in between ninety-two units and sixteen units with the uh developer in the meantime. Would it be fair to ask the question?
Well, he's either got sixteen or he's got ninety-three. Okay.
Agreed. I don't think you can negotiate between those two, Charlie. He's either sixteen or ninety, yeah, ninety-three.
The reason why I say negotiate is because if the applicant knows that the planning commission is passionate enough to ask a judge the question, and if the county commission agrees with the planning commission to be passionate to ask the judge the question, well, then he's gonna do his cost benefit analysis and say, all right, maybe ninety-two isn't the answer. Maybe we could just all agree to settle on fifty or something like that. I don't, I'm, I'm making this up as we go. I'm just trying to think of opportunities to find ways for everyone.
Commissioner Burton.
You don't have the right to do that.
Vice Chair Burton, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, thank you. I, Charlie, I think that that is exactly what we should do. If he threatens the, or if he talks about getting his lawyer out and wanting to bring it for a judge, I, I mean, why don't we do the same? I, I think, I know that that can cost money, but I think that's the way that we, they absolutely let them decide. And as far as meeting in the middle, I, I don't, I, I mean, if you can come up with an agreement that's in the middle, I, I, I know that it's it, it, it might be unpopular. I think if you met in the middle and said, well, you can have twenty-five or you can have thirty, I, I think it's still a win from both sides. It's that depends on what the judge says in some way. So I guess it, it all depends. I, I would support the, they take it to a judge. And if they meet in the middle, I'm, I guess I wouldn't totally support that. I, I better take that back a little bit. Um, I, I think it, it should go to a judge.
So Commissioner Schuman, Schuman, you're not, you're not suggest, I, what I heard Charlie saying is that to just talk to a judge, not let a judge decide it, correct? Because.
No, I'm, I'm suggesting let a judge decide.
No, I think it's a bad idea anytime anything goes legal. My opinion.
Let me point out an observation that based on the uh constitutions of the United States of America, the state of Utah, and state law, that the proper role of government is to support landowners, support citizens in the exercise of their private property rights. Not to try and coerce them into giving up those rights, but figure out what those rights are and support their free exercise of those rights. That's the proper role of government as I understand it. So I think we are kind of, we're not in a position to decide whether this gets litigated or not. We are in a position to make a recommendation, whatever number of units are on that parcel. A, they can be transferred freely within the uh form-based zone in Nordic Valley. Or they can't. The planning commission feels like they ought to stay. Whatever the number they are, they gotta stay on that parcel. So that's a recommendation we're competent to make. But not in uh trying to coerce people into giving up uh rights that they otherwise have. That, that's, that's a bad position for us to, a bad road for us to go down. It's improper. So.
I don't think anyone's trying to get anybody to give up rights. The argument is whether the right exists, and that's what the judge would decide.
That's right. That's why I say we're competent to answer the question. Whatever number of rights are on that parcel, whatever number that is, should they be freely uh in the, in the bucket and they can be distributed throughout the form-based zone? Subject to all the other restrictions of the form-based zone or, and that was our original recommendation. And it's always been the original concept that, yeah, you transfer these things around. Uh, or are we gonna restrict our former recommendation and say they can't be transferred around? That's, that's the question we're being asked. And I think we kinda answered it.
Yep.
Mostly, yeah, the, it's always been contemplated that they be transferred around. That's what we, our original recommendation was, would they be transferred around? There is apparently always been a discrepancy in the applicants, the landowners, citizens, number of units to which he feels he is entitled and Charlie adding it up. And I think I heard Charlie say, well, I'm gonna have to go back on my original position that there are only sixteen on there uh because of our recent discussions and looking at Utah Code uh seventeen twenty-seven A three oh eight that likely requires a different interpretation. So uh, the, the second part of my question was, I was gonna ask the commissioners, okay, straw poll, transfer freely within. I think we've kind of said that's generally, yeah, we're, we're comfortable with that. This other nuances come up, whether we wanna put a restriction that they have to be only transferred within Nordic Valley or as other form-based zones are uh created across the valley, could they be transferred there? That's the second question. Isn't it, Charlie?
Uh, yeah, that was a question that um Commissioner Schuman brought up.
Right. So what is, do, do you have a recommendation on that, Charlie? You, you're the one putting together these zones. Is it are, are you complaining that things will be transferred between uh
Yes.
form-based zones?
Yeah, the way the form-based uh zone is currently created, um, you can transfer from most of the other zones on the valley floor into the form-based zone, and you could transfer from another form-based zone into another form-based zone. That's currently how it's written. And so if we were to apply a restriction to say it can only be transferred to, within this form base, um, it would be unique to a development agreement on this property. My opinion on this, I could go sixes either way. It'd be nice, I feel, to allow them to transfer amongst different villages, just because I wanna make sure there's lots of opportunity for transfers to happen. Because by transfers happening, we're gonna see the market unfold in, in favoring which village um services should go to. And just by the pure um critical mass and scale of that village growing, um, we'll start to see uh units flying off, I think, the mountainside faster. Uh, just because it's gonna be easier to realize, because services and utilities and infrastructure will be installed in those areas.
Okay, so greater flexibility for the overall valley uh development would be encouraged by transferring between the form-based zones?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Uh, if we're gonna take a stroll poll on, straw poll on that, I, I'd be in favor of not restricting it to within the Nordic Form-Based Zone. Uh, other commissioners, please chime in.
Burton, this is Montgomery. I'm with you. I think they should be able to transfer them back and forth to whichever. But I do think that, that whatever the number is, the county should be sure we're gonna lose before they get it to them.
Uh, this is Commissioner Johnson. I agree with both of them. I think it should be transferred throughout the valley and I do think that legal counsel can weigh in on whether or not they, they feel like we're, that's not a battle we're fighting.
Commissioner Torment, um, and my initial thought was keeping it in the, the form-based village that it's nearby or part of, but after you just said, infrastructure or I can't even remember how you phrased it, Charlie. I mean, it makes sense to, if you've got a downtown Eden and it's gonna have a lot of commercial and it makes sense to put more density there than maybe up at Nordic Valley. So in my, after, after you said that, I, it resonated with me that that's probably the right thing to do to allow them to be transferred from village or to, to different village zones.
Okay, Commissioner Wampler.
Oops, there we go. Um, um, if that's, you know, yeah, if that's the way that the ordinance is written in terms of form-based village zone, then that's the way it's written. If things can get transferred.
Well, it's being written, isn't that right, Charlie?
The form-based zone is written. So it's done and adopted.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'll let you continue with your straw poll. And then I've got, I've got a couple of comments, uh, Charlie, after this is done.
Thank you. Did we get one from Commissioner Johnson? Did I miss that?
No, I, I commented between Commissioner Montgomery and Commissioner Torment.
Oh, perfect.
Did you get that, Charlie? So I, in favor, yep, in favor of transferring.
Okay, perfect. This is very helpful. So um, what I'm gonna do is uh, I'll send these on to the county commission. I will let them know that there was a lot of discussion about the extra rights. Um, a little bit of debate about whether or not it'd even be worthwhile to um seek a judgment um, or further discuss with the applicant. I did have um a question for you, Mr. Chairman. Would you be, or Vice Chair, would you be willing to entertain comment from the applicant on this? I'm not sure if he has anything to say about it. But he may be, he have an opinion.
Certainly.
Commissioner Burton, Vice Chair, can I make one more comment?
Sure. Go ahead.
Um, Char, I, I really like the way uh Commissioner Montgomery said it is, legal better be sure they're gonna lose before they give anything over.
I like that too. I wrote that down.
I think that's a good recommendation. And then uh, uh, as far as the transfers go, as we've thought, talked about this, I wanna make a comment that I, that I thought about when, when you, when we brought this up, whether it should come or go out of that area. And I know that in, when we did the form-based village, we thought that uh, that we kinda, that we said that might be a good idea in, in the aggregate. But now talking about this, you look at Nordic Valley, you know, what it has become over the years is it's kinda changed hands. And some people thought they'd make it work and they'd make it into this great place. And then somebody else came in and said that it didn't. And so I guess in some ways, if we allow it to go out of there, are we, are we creating a, what could become a problem in the future? And I wanna hear Char, I wonder what Charlie's thoughts on that are, is where you've been an advocate for saying, you know, freedom of moving them around, which in some ways sound good, but what happens when, you know, we have, you know, we, we sell all the rights out of that one area and it becomes kind of a, a slum, more or less. Is that, is that, is my, you follow my sense of thinking? I'd love to hear what your thoughts are on that. Not that, I mean, I, I'm, I'm really not opposed to it in either way, other than this, this kinda scares me that, hey, we, we got this area to grow this other area just because they got sewer in there faster. And, and you know, that, that kinda says, well, hold on a minute, the idea when we approve the, the, the number of homes in the area here, right? Whether or not the, you know, when we talked about density and saying this is okay to create this zone, it was sold to us with this idea. If it's gonna become something much less than that, then we should, it, I wanna be cautious that we send that somewhere else and not get the ultimate product that was sold to us, right? That's what, that's my concern. I wonder what your thoughts are on that.
No, I think it's a very valid concern. Um, it, it uh to get that critical mass anywhere, uh, you have to have a certain amount of rooftops to give the services. So if you want those restaurants and you want those, um, you know, the ski, ski resort amenities that are above and beyond what's there now, there's gotta be some rooftops in there. That's just basic economics, um, basic economic development. And so you're right, um, if we start knowing at how many units are allowed in this particular area, is it gonna be as successful economically um, in the future uh as if we had just kept the units there and said, don't transfer them anywhere, uh, else develop them in place. When I look at the whole, however, I think number one, that the market, even if, even with the, the housing downturn that's happened over the last few months, I think that the market is going to stimulate the applicant to consume all of his development rights, if not, ask for more from somewhere else. Um, at, in time, again, not right now, just in time. Uh, that's number one. And, and the reason why I think that is because the applicant is going for a public improvements district or public infrastructure district. In order to get a bond on public infrastructure district, he has to have the amount of units uh that he's going to be building and the total financial value of that known in advance of even applying, applying for that district and bonding for it. And so I'm not in any way concerned that he'll keep his units purely because once that district is created and it should be within the next uh uh half a year or so, um, he, the bond and the, the debt financing and everything is uh gonna have to go towards uh or repayment. All of that is supported by the number of units that he's uh proposing. So I think it's very little risk, but I do see what you're saying. If it doesn't turn out to be what we've been sold, is it even gonna be any good? And it's, it's very worthwhile to have that consideration in the back of your mind as we think about these things. I didn't give you a definitive answer, but you know, a lot of different points that go into it.
And Charlie, I've, I've got to thank you for saying my comment better than I said it. What interest would the county have in reducing the number of units on that uh parcel, that four point seven five acre parcel? Why would the county spend money to reduce that number of units if it's gonna make it tougher for this developer that's gotta have more units to, for a special service district and the critical mass to make this thing work? So.
And this is one of the reasons why the number is so important upfront right now for the applicant. I mean, at, at first, we thought maybe this is a, an issue we can kick down the road, but ultimately, he's gotta, he's gotta decide what the value of all of the development is gonna be so he can, he can get his infrastructure district going and size his services appropriately.
Exactly. Okay. Uh. So we, we've answered question number two with two sub-answers, right?
Yeah, and to the.
Say, put them in the bucket, transfer them within the form-based zone here. And it sounds like we have some that say, I think Chair Schuman was saying, let's keep them here. Others were saying allowing to be transferred between other form-based zones. Have, have you got the numbers you need there? Did everybody have a chance to comment on that second sub-question?
I got it.
I, I'm not totally opposed to it being transferred out. The more we've talked about it, just to be clear. So.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to discuss it a little bit, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Commissioner Schuman. Okay. Does anyone, other commissioners have, oh, wait, we were gonna hear from the applicant, right? That was, i- i- if the applicant would like to say anything further, uh, please do. Otherwise, we appreciate the comments you've already made.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Burton. And well, I would, I would like to thank you first because I know it's uh we are discussing things that we have already discussed two months ago. Um, on the question one, I think uh uh, based on what I've heard also today, I think we don't need to raise that issue. We can just say that we will transfer those twenty units out of the parcel three. So there is no issues with the neighbors. And we keep what we have said. Um, and I, I always like to do that. The, the, the issue came up as, as, as we were writing the development agreement and so uh I think we can find a way to, to say that we're gonna transfer these uh, these units out of the parcel three. Uh, regarding the um parcel, uh, the four point six five acres. Um, my, my feeling is that, well, when we read the, the ordinance, we don't see any limitation. This is why we, we, we've said, you know, we understand that maybe the intent at the creation of this parcel was that, that was to create this uh um, a village of sixteen uh units. But uh, when we bought this property, we are not uh bound by the uh design that was decided in two thousand and eight. We are just bound by the um F V three and uh, uh, the size of this, uh, of this parcel. So um uh, if, if the uh, if the design was at that time sixteen unit, that, that was a decision. Um, we feel that the, the way the ordinance is written and we've asked, we have not, never asked to create a legal issue. We have asked a legal opinion. And we have this, as the same legal opinion with Cortland. Uh, and with uh the legal team of the county, we have always tried to work that transparently. Uh, and uh, looking at the ordinance, we don't see any limitation in the text of this ordinance city. So uh, this is why we said, well, we feel that we have that number of units and we said we would never ask for more. So if it's ninety-three, the total is five sixty-five, and if it's sixteen, the total is four eighty-eight. And um, so thank you for your time and, and reflection on that. Uh, we are fine uh with uh uh, asking a, a legal opinion if there is a need for an additional legal opinion or for, for judge decision. We're fine with that. We just want to have the exact number that we have already with the zoning we have. That's all.
Okay.
Not more, not less. Thank you.
Thank you for making that clear. And I understand that's always been your position. Okay, commissioners, uh, any other things we should address or will entertain a motion to uh adjourn?
Vice Chair Burton, this is Rick. Um, I do have an information item that like this, not discuss, but just make you aware of.
Okay, um, Rick, was it non-related to this item?
It is. It's non-related.
Okay, I think Commissioner Wampler had a, a little bit more that she wanted to uh say on this item.
Actually, my comments weren't on the item so much as our work sessions, uh, Charlie. So if, if Director Grover wants to go, that's, that's all right, um, either way.
You, you're fine, uh, Commissioner Wampler to express your concerns.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I think I've brought it up in a previous work session as well. Um, but this is uh another time where we had a work session come up where it would have benefited at least myself, if not any other commissioner, to have had information on what we were going to be discussing and giving our quote-unquote straw poll vote on. I was surprised by the agenda. It wasn't what we were kind of led to believe would be on the agenda this time. I didn't know anything about what we'd be talking about. I started seeing emails from the public having no idea what was going on. And it sounded like from some emails that there were documents that people had been reading and uh, different things that I would have benefited from reading. Um, so I, it would have been helpful, uh, if we're gonna be discussing these things to have a copy of the two thousand and eight ordinance. It would have been helping, helpful to have the maps you wanted us to look at. Um, it, it would have been helpful to have, you know, our past agreements so we could kind of, instead of going by memory, have it in front of us. I, I think the point of the packets and having the planning office provide that background information for us is incredibly helpful, especially for myself. Um, and I read through them, you know, line by line, word for word, as, as you guys have noted. I would have liked to have been more prepared for this work session.
Yeah. Noted. I, I appreciate that uh perspective. Um, I wish we could have gotten something pushed out a little bit uh sooner than we did. Um, with, with the county commission, they just gave the uh, uh, requested have you guys review it last week. Um, and we just didn't have enough chance to get a, a well-informed package put together. I apologize for that.
Yeah, we'll try to be more efficient on those work sessions because typically we try to get information out and like Charlie mentioned, this was one that was kind of spurred on us.
Okay, um, yeah, I just, I know that I've mentioned it in a previous one, so I just want to reiterate. The more information we can be provided for, um, it, it's just better for us.
Agree.
And normally we, we don't ask these kind of direct questions in work sessions, right? It's more like uh just general discussions. Um, and so, yeah, this is definitely a unique situation.
Okay. Uh, I, I think staff understands. Thank you, Commissioner Wampler, for your comments. We, we've, I think all expressed the importance, uh, before the importance of having documents we can prepare ourselves. So we can make our meetings more efficient and come with some really good questions based on what the packet taught us. So, thank you. We appreciate the, the gun you guys are under, but uh, anything you can do to give us information before the meeting would be most appreciated. Okay, Director Grover, you've got some information for us.
Yes, this is just information only. It's not open for discussion because it's not on the agenda. Uh, I just want you to be aware of some upcoming meetings that the county commission is gonna be looking at. Uh, they are going to be reviewing short-term rentals. And the only thing they're gonna be considering is the planning commission's recommendation, uh, which was for no expansion. They are going to be having a work session on December twelfth at one o'clock. Um, there will be a Zoom link provided for that meeting, for that work session. Later that evening, the planning staff, the planning staff, I emphasize because this is not a public meeting. Um, we're just providing a courtesy open house at the library in Huntsville from six to seven o'clock on the twelfth. And then on the twentieth, the county commission may have a possible public hearing to make a determination on only what the planning commission recommended for short, short-term rentals. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. We can't discuss this, but um, we will have a press release that will be going out. Um, but I wanted you to be aware of this. And if you want to call and talk to the planning office, you're more than welcome to. Um, and the public's also more than welcome to call and contact the planning office. But I just wanted the information um out there.
Director Grover, you mentioned it's not a, a public uh meeting. Do you want to expand on what that means?
It's just an open house forum on, at the Weber County Libraries at, or at the um Huntsville Library. Is that what you're referring to, Charlie?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, um, I think what, what you mean, if I understand correctly, by not a public meeting, it's not a meeting of a public body. So it's not a planning commission or a county commission meeting. It's just county staff engaging with the public.
Correct.
Still available for the public to attend, right?
Yes, and it's not um requiring any notices or anything like that. It's just more an informational meeting. And it's not even a meeting, it's an open house.
Okay, where the public can come and ask questions of staff.
That's correct.
Right. And, and the questions would be laid around, a- and it sounds like the county, the county commission is now focusing these three meetings only on the planning commission's recommendation to them made so many months ago that S T R allowed areas in the valley not be expanded.
That is correct, but I'm not opening this for discussion because it's not on the agenda.
Correct. Okay. Thank you for that information. Any, anything else, Director Grover?
No, thank you.
Okay, anything we, else we should consider before we consider a motion to adjourn? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Sounds like it's unanimous. We will adjourn and I thank you all for all your good valuable input. Charlie, thank you for helping us on this.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.